All right, folks, we're at 100.[16.57][16.57](APPLAUSE). Thank you for, everyone for coming. Thank you for the last people who came in. My name is William Dark. I'm your town moderator. Again, thanks for coming. Just before we start, we're going to have a pledge of allegiance. So if you could all stand, please. Over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
And if we could, just before we start, I'm going to let our town clerk, Beth, kind of come to the mic for a minute.
Before we begin tonight's meeting, I would like to ask, thank you, for a moment of silence for Richard C. Abbott, Sr. He passed away on November 16th this year, 2021. Dick Abbott was the town clerk for 27 years, first elected in 1971 and re-elected every year until 1998, when he chose not to run. Dick was a wonderful resource. Even recently, he called my office after the first town meeting in 2020 to make sure that I knew what documents I needed to file with the state and the Attorney General's office. He jokingly told me that he probably forgot more than I knew. Dick loved Groveland and its people, and he was thoughtful and always offered his assistance. So I please ask for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we open the meeting, just a couple of quick things. I know if everyone wants to get out of here real fast tonight. Yeah, there is a game. So we're going to invoke a little-known rule from town meeting times that allows us to vote everything all at once, and then we get to go home.[130.44][130.44](LAUGHTER). No, it's not that easy, but we're going to make it go fast anyway. So Beth, if you could do your thing.
So greetings. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn inhabitants of said town who are qualified to vote in the special town meeting to meet at the Dr. S. Elmer Bagnell School, 253 School Street, Groveland, Mass. on Monday, December 6th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. to act upon or take any other action relative thereto on the following articles.
And sorry, just before we start completely, just if everyone could introduce the bells up, who's up here? We can get rolling on both sides. We'll start over here.
Rebecca Oldham, Town Administrator.
Jason Aves, Selectman.
Kathleen Castren Ellis, Select Board.
Delon Yell, Select Board.
Daniel McDonald, Selectman.
Ed Watson, Board of Selectmen.
Elizabeth Coniff, Town Clerk.
Jeffrey Blake, Town Council.
Ruth Rivard, Finance Board.
Sarah McGrath, Finance Board.
Jim Scanlon, Finance Board.
Okay, thank you. Let's get rolling. Article 1, see if the town will vote to transfer $32,000 from the stabilization fund account number 850004035992-000 to the personal buyback account number 2410-040-49700-000, or take any other action relative thereto. The article is submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a two-thirds majority. Note, an employee is retiring, and the town will need additional funds to buy back accumulated sick leave. The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action. The Finance Board recommends favorable action. Could we have a motion, please?
Move favorable action.
And a second. All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. And, sorry, again, I'm sorry, we get rolling quickly here, but discussion is great. Encourage it. I always tell people, as town moderator, I've been, I sat through a lot of meetings on the Board of Selectmen, I've done a few as moderator now. My thing is, if somebody has something new that they want to offer up, I'm glad to hear it. Everyone wants to hear it. If somebody else has already said it, you don't need to say it, okay? That's all. And if it takes you 10 minutes and it's all new, that's great. If it takes you 10 seconds and it's the same thing somebody else said, not so great. So, and we try to be respectful to each other. Any comments are through the moderator, not to another member of the town meeting, okay? And when you want to speak, come to a mic and just say who you are and where you live. So any discussion under Article 1? Okay, let's take a vote then. Note discussion. All in favor of Article 1, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Passes. Article 2, and Sam, we're going to have an amendment on this article. I'm going to read the article first. To see if the town will vote to transfer $15,000 from stabilization fund 8500-040-35992-000 to the consultant expense account number 1001-122-54000-054, for consultant, treasurer, or take any other action relative thereto. So before we have any motions, we do have an amendment that's going to be offered up. Is that correct?
Yes, that is. Thank you. I, Kathleen Castren Ellis, move to amend Article 2 to remove consultant expense account 1001-122-54000-054, and to replace that with Treasury slash collection clerk 1001-133-51112-051.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend this. We also need a second for that. So what we're going to do is we're going to have, okay, thank you. We're going to have a discussion on the amended, the amendment, and then we can vote the main body of the motion up or down, depending on how that passes. So maybe we could just have, could we have a little bit of explanation before we go ahead? Okay.
Sure, I'm glad to. Hi, Kathleen Castren Ellis, Board of Selectmen. So we, after speaking amongst ourselves prior to this meeting, we removed the consultant from the town's contract because it was extremely expensive. It was $130 an hour, and we wanted to do something more to support the treasury work. So we are going to bring in a treasury collection clerk, which will be at a much better price and offer more support. So that's the change in the line numbers. Thank you.
If there's any other discussion, just line up at the mic.
Elizabeth Coniff, 211 Seventh Star Road. Regarding Article 2, the town of Groveland lost its finance slash treasurer in June. That's when she resigned, and then actually, her last day was in August. The town has struggled in the financial office for a year and four months. The Board of Selectmen hired an interim finance director, and unfortunately, most of the time was spent justifying what he was asked to do and when he was asked to do it. So the finance, so the finances of Groveland continue to suffer. The Board of Selectmen finally posted and hired a treasurer for the town of Groveland, Michelle Beegan, and she is outstanding. Michelle was an assistant treasurer for the town. She was hired in August of 2020. The town treasurer is positioned during the interviewing process. The subcommittee, which was two of the Board of Selectmen members, offered to continue the services of the treasurer consultant that they hired to assist her to close out the finances for fiscal '21, the receipts. The consultant would assist Michelle in all aspects of the treasury department, and then finally completed the past due issues. And they were ready to move forward with the most effective, which, I'm sorry, they were ready to move forward with the most effective and efficient way to run the office. An example of our consultant was that she was very familiar with a software program that we've had in this town for years. The software program actually talks between the assessor's office, the treasurer, and the accountant, so that they don't all have to duplicate their work. We hadn't known it, and we didn't do it at all for many years. Now we can do it. The Board of Selectmen are now trying to change the decision after the fact, and they have given the consultant her notice. I'm asking you to leave article as it was written, to continue with the consultant, to finally put Groveland on the road to an efficient treasury department. And I ask that the Board of Selectmen meet again to rehire Sarah Hunter, our consultant, at their next meeting. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
You can stay right there if it's the board's opinion. You can.
No, it's not the board's opinion.
Oh, okay. Okay. I thought it was unanimous. That's what I was told.
I missed the meeting.
No, the meeting here tonight.
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead.
Daniel McDonald, Board of Selectmen, and Tulock Lane, taxpayer. Concern I have is when we hired Michelle, we assured her that we would support her. We posted the position, and in this job market, we didn't get too many candidates, okay? So we looked at a qualified candidate in-house, and we gave her assurances that we would support her with a high-caliber consultant, so that she would have someone to bounce ideas off and questions and make sure that she could perform and grow into that position as a town treasurer. So I have concerns whether or not, without Sarah, that if she needed that support and guidance, there might be a void there. I've spoken with other board members and Rebecca, and I've heard that there are some assurances that there's a mentor program, potentially with West Newbury. So I'd like to hear some more clarification, and I think the people of this town would also. But I'm concerned that we made promises to Michelle, and I don't like to reneg on my word on anything. So if she needs the support, I don't want to pull the rug out from under her. So I have some reservations about it. The board's assured me that she will get substitute support for the position, but, you know, I have some reluctance on that. That's my position.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Further discussion?
Hi, Kathleen Castren Ellis. I actually sat in on the interviews with both Michelle and another candidate, and we found in the interviews that Michelle was highly competent and learning at an accelerated rate. She's been with us as an assistant clerk for a year before that. She's been to the treasurer's school this past summer. We will be sending her again this next summer. We have also set up with neighboring towns for her to be able to coordinate and ask questions of more seasoned treasurers in the area. And this article would provide clerical support so that she can free herself up to gain more experience and more training on the higher-order work. As far as the consultant, at $130 an hour plus a 60-minute travel time, also at $130 an hour, the money just doesn't go far enough. It doesn't provide the right amount of support. Michelle has had access to Sarah Hunter during the past couple of months as she entered the new job. We made sure of that. We made sure that the prior fiscal year was closed prior to thanking Sarah very much for her work. But again, she's beyond our price tag. We can't afford that kind of consultant work on an ongoing basis. So we are supporting Michelle. Michelle is a hard worker, and she's really talented. I think she is an excellent treasurer and will continue to do a great job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Go ahead.
Kathy Melsakos, Town Vol. Terrace. Now that Ms. Castren Ellis has brought up the cost, if we were to hire a full-time town collector treasurer, aren't we going to have to pay for all kinds of benefits and all of that too? And what would the salary be, and what would the cost differential be?
Can we have an answer for that?
Is it working? Oh, yes, thank you. We are already posted to hire an assistant treasurer. That's already fully funded in the budget, I think, at about $43,000 with benefits.
Keep it up until you're counted.
That's already been voted at the annual town meeting, and that has yet to be filled. This would be a clerical without benefits, so it would handle the lower-level work, like the phones and the collecting of the money, free up filing, things like that. So it would not be a full-time benefits job, but it would be of great assistance.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to vote the amendment first, okay? And just refresh your memory. It's going to replace the, remove consultant expense account and replace with treasurer collection clerk. This is a simple majority, so all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
My moderator's ears are good, but not that good. So I think we're going to have a hand count. So do you guys have, a couple of people can help us? The way the hand count works, so everyone in favor, raise your hand. Keep it up until somebody points at you and tells you not to. Now we need, now we're going to vote the article as amended, okay? This requires a two-thirds vote, because it's coming from stabilization, so more than likely, we're going to do a hand count again. But all in favor of Article 2 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Yeah, we're going to do a hand count. Again, all in favor, keep, raise your hand, and keep it up until somebody tells you not Sorry, again, all in favor, keep, raise your hand. We're going to do it one more time. What was 63 in favor, 19 opposed? My math is good enough. I believe that's more than two-thirds. It passes. Okay, let's keep moving. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to transfer $6,510 from the stabilization fund account. I don't have to read all the numbers. 8500, you can see the numbers there, to the public health nurse salary account number 1001. The rest of the numbers, or take any other action relative thereto. Article submitted by the Board of Health, again, requires a two-thirds majority. The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action. The Finance Board recommends favorable action. Do we have a motion and a second?
Move favorable action.
Does this work? Move favorable action.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Hodges, 35 Union Street. Just a statement. I would like to encourage the Board of Selectmen to require the Board of Health to offer a report, like other committees do, at our annual town meeting in May. Thank you.
Thank you. Good, more discussion? Again, just state your name and where you're from.
Yep. Debra Hall. I'm the chair of the Board of Health, and so to answer some questions. We have a total of 683 COVID cases that have been since last year. 553 of those have been in the current year, from December 11th of 2020 until now. There are 16 children, 57 active cases, 2 hospitalized. There's the highest number of cases are among the 19 to 60-year-olds, and they are a mix of vaccinated and unvaccinated. We've only had six hours for quite some time. We've gone through three public health nurses during this COVID crisis, and we have now hired back our one that we had, who was with us 27 years ago. Anita Wright has agreed to come back to help us get this all. It's just been, it's been tough.
Sure.
And we also have a contact tracer who has been burdened with everything, with just one person, so we need this to pass. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Go ahead.
Dick Hodges, still residing at 35 Union Street. The, we spend a lot of time talking about the cases, but I rarely read or hear from anyone about the recovery rate. And the little bit of reading that I've done says that the recovery rate is significant. So I'm wondering if sometime either the Board of Health or this town will start taking note of the recovery rate here, instead of just talking about the cases.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, let's take a vote. Article 3, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Passes. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $41,168.38 from the FY 2022 sewer enterprise department retained earnings to offset the Havel Capital Bond Expense Line item 6510 ending in O58. Funding shortfall, sum or sums of money to be expended by the Water and Sewer Commission to pay for unpaid bills of the town from previous fiscal years, or to take any other action relative thereto. The article is submitted by the Board of Selectmen. This requires a nine-tenths majority, so we may have a hand count, but we'll see. It says, note, Groveland Water and Sewer Department has an intermunicipal agreement with the City of Havel, and invoice was not sent to Groveland FY '20. And this article is to allow the Groveland Water Sewer Department to pay the bill, the FY '20 invoice. The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action. The Finance Board recommends favorable action. Do we have a motion and a second?
Move favorable action.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have a discussion? Nope. Okay, let's take a vote. All in favor of Article 4, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, that is nine-tenths. It's unanimous. Passes. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to accept as a public way under the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 82, as amended. Graham Way as laid out by the Board of Selectmen is shown on a plan entitled Plan of Land in Groveland, Mass. Street Acceptance Plan is showing right-of-way of Graham Way is prepared for SD Way Realty Trust. George, is it Hazelteen? I'm not sure of the name. Trustee prepared by Millennium Engineering, Inc., dated May 11, 2020, is filed in the Planning Department and the Office of the Town Clerk, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by such means and upon such terms and conditions as they see fit such interest in land as are necessary to provide for the use and maintenance of said way for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Groveland, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The article is submitted by the Planning Board. The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action. The Planning Board recommends favorable action. Do we have a motion?
Move favorable action.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Nope.
Carl Bellinger, River Pines Drive. Where is the map that's mentioned? How can we discuss this?
I believe, was there a copy over there? Is that? Oh, I'm sorry. No, I guess not. That's not it. I'm sorry, my mistake.
That's Bagnell.
Do we, sir, do you have a specific question that maybe somebody could answer for you?
Well, it's just that it's an important issue, obviously. And my question is, what does it look like? Where is it? How big is it?
Okay, if somebody could answer. It sounds like this concern, is the road worthy of being accepted? Is there anyone from the Planning Board here tonight, or is there Road Commissioner? I don't know. Anyone who can speak to it? If somebody can speak to it, walk up to the mic and go ahead.
So it's basically right on the border of Georgetown-Groveland, going up Uptac off of SD Way. Brand-new street, seven-house development, eight-house development.
The road's done. You guys live there? You're all happy with it?
I've lived there for four years. Some of my neighbors here as well. We've all lived there for four years, paying taxes in Groveland for four years.
All right, further discussion?
We don't have anybody from Planning Board here? Is that what I'm getting?
I guess not.
Because my question would have been for them. That's why I ask.
I asked. Anyone from Planning Board? Nope, somebody's moseying on up.
I reside from the Planning Board, but I will ask, this is one of my...
My question is, shouldn't a road be public before houses are put on it?
No. Because we got to make sure that the road meets standards and everything else, and it's finished right before the house is put on it. And you don't want heavy equipment going up and down a finished road and trying to put cement trucks, backhoes, and everything else on it.
Hi, thank you.
Sir, just state your name for the record, please.
I'm sorry, Bob Danforth.
Thank you, I know, but...
293 Center Street.
Yeah, and I know I'm not supposed to editorialize, but this is how things have always been done. I mean, the roads are in, and then ultimately, they're...
And this will help, this will help with Jap-90 money for roads.
Okay, any further discussion? Nope, yeah. Let's take a vote. All in favor of Article 6, I'm sorry, Article 5, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Passes. Article 6, to see if the vote, I'm sorry, to see if the town will vote to accept as a public way under the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 82, as amended. Atwood Lane is laid out by the Board of Selectmen and shown on a plan entitled Street Acceptance Plan of Atwood Lane, locating Groveland, Mass., is prepared for Evergreen Real Estate Trust. Al Cool Yard trustee, prepared by the Moore &amp; Cameron Group, Inc., dated March 17, 2021, is filed in the Planning Department and the Office of the Town Clerk, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by such means and upon such terms and conditions as they see fit such interest in land as are necessary to provide for the use and maintenance of said way for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Groveland, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. Article submitted by the Planning Board. The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action. The Planning Board recommends favorable action. Do we have a motion?
Move favorable action.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on Article 6? Let's take a vote. All in favor of Article 6, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimous. It passes. Article 7, to see if the town will vote to transfer $111,657 from the stabilization fund number 850035992 to the Pennsyltown Supplement Assessment Line item 1001, to see there ending in O57, or take any other action relative thereto. Article submitted by the Board of Selectmen, again, requires a two-thirds majority. Note, removal of American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Two Funds as an allowable revenue source impacted the assessment. This article proposes to supplement the funds. Do we have a motion under Article 7?
Move favorable action.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Okay, let's take a vote. All in favor of Article 7, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimous. It passes. Article 8, to see if the town will vote to transfer $75,000 from the stabilization fund account 850004035992 to make capital upgrades at Bagnell School, including all costs incidental and related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto. The article is submitted by the Board of Selectmen, again, requires a two-thirds majority. Note, these funds will be used for the Bagnell School for the asbestos abatement work. The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action. The Finance Board recommends favorable action. Do we have a motion?
Move favorable action.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Dick Hodges, 35 Union Street. Can someone tell me why this project did not happen during the renovation? Because that would have been ideal in terms of getting it all done right away and immediately. Or is that just hindsight on our part?
Can somebody speak to that?
I wasn't on the renovation project.
Well, I apparently missed the funeral of common sense. It just seemed that that should have been a major pride... that that, that should have been a major priority during that project. Second question, all of these are scheduled at different times, and I recognize if we're trying to do this during vac, vacation time, I get that. But is that, is this price that is labeled on this map, are those fixed prices? Be safe, and is that the only estimate?
Do we have anyone who can answer that for us?
How many bids we got?
Mr. Principal Dang here? Oh, Danforth, Mr. Danforth.
Thank you, Mr. Danforth.
No, these prices aren't fixed right now because of price increases and everything else. We did not get the money last year, um, to do any asbestos removal, so we are trying to keep it going and just keep things moving along. We do have a small abatement job here that doesn't include any abatement. It just goes moving a tile because it was clean underneath. Um, these estimates that we did give at the time were pretty close, but now we'd have to redo it all over again. And yes, it was hindsight that we missed it in the building pro, project here. It should have been done in the building project, and it would have been all done and complete.
All right, thanks. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Um, any further discussion? All right, um, let's take a vote under Article eight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous. It passes. And unless I'm mistaken, that's the last article. Is that correct? So we need a motion to dissolve our town meeting. Would somebody like to make a second? All in favor dissolving town meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Meeting is dissolved. Thank you, everyone. Go Patriots.